Good evening, this is the New Market Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 14th, 2012. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody, and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are minutes. Do we have minutes?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman. We'll have those at the March meeting.
All right, I won't get to enjoy those. Next on the agenda is Mr. Kyle Pimentel of the Strafford Regional Planning Commission, presentation and update on the mill scenic byway program. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Kyle suggested maybe we want to sit in the audience so we can see the screen.
That's probably a good idea.
Want to point that up? Try and turn that on. Uh-oh. Just see what's coming up.
All right. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Kyle Pimentel. I'm one of the regional planners at Strafford Regional Planning Commission, and this is a project that we've been working on for about a year now, and we're finally at the point where we want to start meeting with communities and, you know, showing them, you know, what we've done. So, first of all, I'm going to go over a little bit of the national and state scenic byway program, give a little bit of an overview, the types of byway designations, the process of putting forth a nomination to get a route designated into the program, what the grant funding opportunities are, what the proposed route looks like, the corridor management plan that we're going to work on, and then the next steps moving forward. So briefly, the byway program was established in 1991 with the Federal Intermodal Surface Transportation Act, and since then, there have been 150 designated byways in 46 states throughout the country. And the basic vision of this program is to create these distinctive collective American roads, and they look at roads that have unique qualities, specifically archaeological, cultural, historic, natural, recreational, and scenic qualities. And in 1996, the first nominations were put forth by local agencies and communities that thought they had, you know, unique routes in their region, and from there, 150 have been designated since. It's managed by New Hampshire DOT. For New Hampshire, it's different in other states, and also the New Hampshire Scenic and Cultural Byways Council has input as well. For New Hampshire, we have, there's three different levels of designation. The All-American Roads are the big ones. They're pretty much the cream of the crop of as high as you can get. Some examples of those are the Florida Keys, Route 66, the Las Vegas Strip, the George Washington Memorial, Parkway. We don't have any of those in New Hampshire, but we do have three that are in the National Scenic Byway Program, which is the Connecticut River Byway, the Kangamangas, and the White Mountain Trail. We also have 14 state byways, and three are in what I guess you could call the lakes and seacoast. The Branch River Valley is up in Milton, Wakefield. The Independence is down in the Exeter region, and the coastal byway goes from Hampton to Portsmouth. All in all, New Hampshire has over 1,000 miles of designated scenic and cultural byways. So, New Hampshire's has done a pretty good job, you know, as far as designating these routes. This is the proposed route. The byway route for us is about 18 miles from the tip of Rollinsford and South Berwick at the border, down through Dover, Durham, and then in New Market. What our goal is eventually is to make one giant loop. This green route is the coastal route, Newcastle, down to Seabrook, and then the red route is the Independence. And this black dotted line is the potential connector, and that's something that we're going to have to work with Rockingham Planning Commission if we want to do this, to connect them. And then the long-term goal is to work with Southern Maine and have some, either come through South Berwick and York and Elliott, in through Kittery, and then meet up in Newcastle. So you have one giant loop if someone wants to make a day trip or a two-day trip. So that's something that we're working on. So where we're at, the nomination process, the first part of this is the criteria, and the criteria is, like I said before, the scenic resources, natural, historic, cultural, archaeological, and recreation. What also they require is planning and support. They want to know that communities are going to be active in planning for a visitor experience. We want communities to recognize their strengths, you know, and this is more of a managing these resources. There's no real regulations that come with this. The only regulation that comes into it is there's no major signage, like billboards, which for the towns that are in this region that we're proposing already have that in their zoning anyway. So that's something that wouldn't really come into effect, but this program is really about recognition, and it's not about any sort of regulations. As far as grants, it's nationally competitive. Since 1992, New Hampshire has got about $560,000 per year. There's a little summary off to the right. Since 1992 to 2011, about $469 million have been allocated to this program, and it has funded about 3,050 projects. And out of that total, about $11.2 million over 20 years has gone to New Hampshire. And in 2011, out of the 40 million, you know, throughout the country, New Hampshire was given 1.1 million. That's a little skewed because one project was a pretty large project, 1.1 million, and it was a rest stop parking area on 302 that has parking to see Mount Washington. So that was a big project that was up there. That took up about 90% of that funding. The other project was a corridor management plan that Lakes Region Planning Commission completed. And some of these other eligible activities for grants, you can come up with a management plan, safety improvements, you know, other byway facilities, access to recreation, resource protection, marketing, interpretive information, so there's a lot that you can do. With that being said, this is one of the programs at DOT that has sort of gotten pinched a little bit. So, you know, as much as there are grants out there, in 2011, there was two throughout the country, and one of those was for a national, yeah, national byway, not a state byway. So the funding could be there, but you don't really know. This is the proposed route again. This is just zoomed in a little bit more in what we're doing now. We've set up joint meetings. We've already met with New Market, Durham, Madberry, Dover, and Rollinsford, and what we've got from everybody is that the towns all have this sense of community, and they want to promote tourism, they want to protect their, you know, rural atmosphere, but they want to drive people to their downtowns. So the next part of this, once we submit it, is there'll be a regional corridor advisory committee if it does get designated, and that'll be a few members from each town, which will get together and write a corridor management plan. And that's going to be something that we've started now, but we're not quite to the point where we really want to start pulling everybody together and finding out how we want to do it. So that's going to be, I would say that's the next, I don't know, couple of months before we get there. For corridor management plan, it's basically setting aside strategies to manage these resources. A goal is going to be a lot of community involvement, providing conservation enhancements, promoting tourism, economic development, and identifying management strategies to sort of balance the concerns. Like I said before, we're at the beginning stages of that now, but in order to receive federal funding, a corridor management plan has to be in place. So the way this will work is we're going to submit it for designation. If it does go through and is designated, the next part of it will be finish the management plan, and then it'll be, you'll be able to apply for funds and grants after that. This is just a few examples of what we've done so far, and this is all going to be, and this can be used, you know, for multi-purposes. This is part of our appendix. I just pulled it out for this presentation, but historic resources, these are some of the examples in New Market, the historic graveyards, the engine house, the Warrior Canyon, the Robert White Memorial Stone, the downtown mill buildings, the fishing weir. And we went out this winter, and we went out to every single one of these points, took a few pictures, and then we've done some research, and we've got a little bit of a blurb for each one of these. We're hoping that once this is compiled, towns will be able to either make pamphlets or hand this out to local vetted breakfasts or, you know, businesses downtown and say, this is the, you know, these are the things that visitors can see in our town once they're here. Recreation, you've got the Heron Point Sanctuary, Shonda Park, Arbor Park, Lamprey River Access, Rockingham Golf Course, the River Walk, some other natural and scenic resources, McKellen Dam, views from the Lamprey, Split Rock, Water Street Access. Cultural, you've got the John Webster Hall, the Stone Church, let's see what else, the Stone School Museum. There's also things like Old Home Day and Heritage Festival that New Market hosts. So those are some of the things that we've been putting together as far as the existing conditions. We've also started looking at physical conditions of the road. We looked at traffic volume, and when we met this summer, we wanted to look at some traffic volume, and the three places that we took counts was right on the bridge, Veterans' Bridge, right outside here of the Town Hall, right before Packers Falls, and down by the golf course. And those three, I don't know if you can see it from there, but from the three numbers that we got, Veterans' Bridge was about almost 13,000, 7,000 outside the Town Hall, and Route 108 down by the golf course, about 16, almost 17,000. This number might be a little skewed. It was taken before the students go back to school, so that's probably more like 16, maybe even 18,000 during the school year. We also wanted to find out some traffic, some speed and accident data, but we had a little bit of trouble with our counts this summer, so what we thought to do was do it by a town-by-town basis and talk to the local police departments. So for New Market, the total speeding citations from 2007 to 2011 were 557, and the number of collisions in that time period were 168, with one fatal. I believe this is outside Hershey Park, I believe, Hershey Drive, Industrial Park, somewhere around there.
Hershey Lane.
Hershey Lane. In the most problematic areas for speeding, it was the Durham Town Line and Simmons Lane and down by the golf course were the most speeding areas. As far as accidents, the biggest one was down in the Exeter Street Bowl area. There were 68 crashes since 2007. The Exeter Road near the Newton Fields Line down here was 59, and then North Main Street, north of the library, had 27. So this will give you an idea of, you know, where certain accidents have taken place. I did get in touch with the police department, and they said that a lot of the accidents have been associated with weather and driver inattention. It hasn't been speeding. So those were, and they also said that while there was a lot of work being done in the downtown area, they saw fewer collisions where they thought they were going to see more, but people actually were driving really slow and being much more careful when there was all that construction. So that was something that they didn't expect. We also have done a sign inventory and looked at levels of service. So what we went out and did is we geocoded all points, that any sign that was a warning or regulatory or guiding directional sign, we took a GPS point and made a map of it. I didn't put the map on here because there are so many points that when you put it on a map, it just looks like a big blur. So it's really only going to be used in like a shape file or if someone has ArcMap, or if you really want to zoom in on an area, but to look at the entire thing, there's just too many of them. We noticed that most of the commercial enterprises were in downtown Dover and New Market with additional signs outside of the warning and regulatory signs. There were guide signs, recreation, cultural interests, like the, you know, the boat access, libraries, you know, parking, so those were the other ones outside of the warning and regulatory ones. We also did an inventory on both pedestrian and bike traffic, and what we used was a Sustainable Cities Institute Level of Service Calculator. And how we did that was we looked at variables along the roadway such as shoulder width, road width, traffic volume, classification, pavement condition, speed limit, if there were sidewalks or not, and we put this all into a database, and we run a model for a segment of road, and it spits out a number and tells you if it's an extremely high level of service for pedestrians or bike, or if it's very low and in-between there. So it's a good guide, and I think communities will get something out of it, but it should be used as a guide. There are some inconsistencies with it, and it doesn't take everything into effect. For example, on Route 4 in Rollinsford, you have almost 10-foot shoulders now on that one section as you're heading into North Berwick. So you can fit three or four bikes easily on that section, but the speed limit's 55, and people don't drive 55. People drive 65 on that, and so that's a moderately high level of service, but that's not necessarily saying that you should really be biking on that section of road. So it's a guide and it's useful, but I think what we saw in the maps were pretty accurate. The downtown areas for most towns had a pretty high level of service with, you know, ample sidewalks and bike lanes and parking. So most of the downtowns had a pretty good, you know, level of service, and then as you started to extend out that, it started to get less and less. So it's a good guide, but it should be looked at. We also started looking at land use distribution and conservation activities. This chart here shows all the land use in the byway, giving a half a mile, so a quarter mile on each side of the roadway. And what we saw was that 46% of the land from New Market to Rollinsford consists of either forest or agriculture land. The next highest after that is residential at 28. So there's a lot of farmland. It's, you know, it is developed, especially in Dover, in their downtowns, but, you know, for the most part, it's pretty, there's a lot of open space. Just like, you know, I just said, you know, high concentrations of residential and commercial are in their downtown areas. We also wanted to know what sort of conservation activities have been, are going on, and this is just New Market. This isn't byway Y. This is just the Conservation Commission here in New Market sponsoring pontoon boat rides on the Lamprey, fishing derby, the rec department, you know, a number of different activities that they're doing, and that's something that DOT and this program would like to see, is that these communities are active. So most of them, and especially in this entire region, the Conservation Commissions are really active and involved in town activities, so I think that's it. If you have any questions, there's my contact information. I would like to thank Diane, Phil LePage, Mike Provost, Bob Legault, and Mike Palowski. They helped out a lot with getting this together, you know, giving me resources and where to look for information, and, you know, pamphlets, historical documents, so they've been a huge help in creating this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions for Kyle?
I had a question about the signage. I wasn't... Hi, I enjoyed your presentation. In terms of the signage, I wasn't sure that I understood about how the byway would be marked and if it would have signage or not. I was confused.
The signage that we did, or...
Or would you, is there some sort of national signage that would describe the route?
If there are markers, I don't know how many there would be along the route, and
I think it would depend on whether or not it's, like I said, that there was those three different levels. There's the state, national, and all-American.
Sure, let's say if it were at the state level.
If it was a state designated byway, I'm sure that there would be at least one sign per town that would say something, but I'm not, I'm not positive on how that would work. But there's also, in one of the funding opportunities, one thing that is in there is you could request for signage that points people to your downtown area. So that could be something. Have you seen in downtown Dover where they have those plaques? They have basically, you know, if you go downtown, you can see these plaques that describe the dam, the mills.
Okay, oh, sure. Yes, 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 I've seen those, yes.
You know, when people are walking by, and those are some projects that, you know, signage and things like that, that might fall under. But as far as a sign like you see for the Lamprey, you know, it's like a designated river into the New Hampshire Protection Program. I'm not sure if they, if the program puts that out there. I would assume they do, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
And then also, if people were, wanted to travel along scenic routes, is that, would they go to, where would people find maps at state DOTs generally, or where else would those be publicized?
There's actually some on the presentation. When you, if you click on, I can send it to you, but there's a webpage at DOT, it's called the Scenic and Cultural Section, and if you click on, it gives that map of New Hampshire, has all of the byways in New Hampshire, and if you click on it, it'll give you a tour map, it'll give you the highlights of what's on that map, you know, what museums to stop at. It's a one-page PDF of all the information, when they're running tours. So if this did go forward, we would have our own page like that that would get uploaded onto their site, and, you know, you'd go to the New Hampshire map, click on the Mill Scenic Byway, and a page would come up and tell you how long the route is and all the information that they would need.
Okay, great, and so then other states like Virginia would also, the Department of Transportation, I mean, people know to look for this sort of information at the Department of Transportation's website typically? Okay, thanks.
Anything else for Kyle? Diane?
Oh, I thought you did a great job as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the types of grants that we could apply for in the future if we went through the process and adopted our corridor management plan? Can you just give us a flavor of the types of projects that have been done in other parts of the state?
Yeah. You know, like I said, in 2011, there was that pull-off area for a scenic view for Mount Washington. That was one. There are other, you know, parking lots, improvements, I would say maybe something like extra bike, I wouldn't say bike lanes, but there could be, you know, bike locks or something like that in a downtown area where people would be able to do that. It's not a giant program, but you could do small improvements, maybe minor sidewalk improvements. I'm trying to think of something more specific.
I'm confused. Are there more, have there been more than two grants issued to New Hampshire?
Overall, yeah. There's been, I forget the number, but I want to say $11 million over 20 years.
Over 20 years.
So there was 1.1 million that was just allocated just last year, but there are a ton of projects. They have them all listed on DOT's website. If you go and look, you can look going back from 1992 up until 2011, and it gives a short description of every one that was granted money. It's a lot of it, the beginning stages, if we were to get started, is after the corridor management plan, it would be small steps, you know, minor improvements here and there, you know, recreation, you know, the big money, the big construction ones go to the All-American Roads and the national, you know, byways. The state byways tend to see small planning funding for minor improvements here and there. It could be something as simple as taking all the information that we had and giving a couple thousand dollars to make brochures or something like that, that you could just pass out through the entire town, you know, and have everyone, you know, places like at Crack Skulls when people are having something like a coffee or something like that, just to read through all the different, you know, qualities and all the different resources that are in the town that they may not know about. So it's probably going to be things like that, education and outreach. You know, there are some construction projects, you know, shoulder width widening and safety improvements. That could be something, but like I said, the construction ones tend to be more on the state, the national ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Okay, I have one question. With the corridor management plan, does it have any impact on the property owners that abut the byway? There's no, like I said, there's no regulations whatsoever as far as...
Nope.
All right.
The only regulation is there's an RSA that says that there could be no billboards.
Right.
But that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If we don't already have it, can we get all the traffic information that was on that slide and any backup to that, as well as the accident information?
Yep.
That'd be great.
I'll just provide a copy of the car. Should we get that? That's okay?
Yeah, you can have the traffic count data that we set. We also, those are just three that we set last year per request, but we have traffic data, we've been setting traffic counts in New Market for a while, so we have different locations all over New Market if that's something...
That'd be great for planning.
Yeah, we have all that information going back a number of years, so we can definitely get that to you.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Chinberg Builders, request for a bond reduction on the Mill Ribbon renovation project, Main Street tax map, U2 lot 366A, M1 zone. Diane?
Yes.
Background?
Yes, as you may recall, part of the planning board's condition of approval on the site plan for the Chinberg project was he was to post a $240,000 bond, if you will, or a letter of credit to assure that the work would get done within the timeframe that the planning board had stipulated. And as you well know, he's moved full steam ahead, and at this point, the only remaining item that needs to be done is the top coat on the parking lot. And we had our engineer, Mr. Dagel, as a matter of fact, from Underwood Engineers, take a look at the original cost estimate that was used as the basis for the bond, and there was about $34,000 set aside for the final wearing course. And under our site review regulations, the planning board is able to reduce the performance guarantee to 50% of the cost of remaining work, which in this case would be about $16,500. So what Mr. Chinberg is requesting, the board consider reducing the bond from the $240,000 as it is today to $16,500. And right before our meeting, I did get a chance to talk to Bob Dagel, and he was very comfortable with that. He's been sort of serving as the construction engineer to oversee the work, to make sure it's done according to...
I'll make a motion to reduce the performance bond to $16,500 for Chinburg Builders at Tax Map U2 Lot 366A in the M1 Zone.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussions or questions? Saying that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Before we go on, I want to correct something. I forgot to appoint Rick who is sitting in for Justin tonight. Justin Norman was, could not be here and he's excused, so Rick as the...
Thank you so much.
Okay, good. So I apologize for that, Rick. Thank you. Okay, good. Next on the agenda is a, which I trust will be a brief update from the zoning subcommittee. Val?
As you ask it that way. Or was that a question? Just, I will be brief and have Janice and Diane weigh in as well. Unfortunately, Justin can't be here. So the, we had two public hearing sessions for the, at the committee level, one on January 23rd and the other on February 4th. We had a combined, we had seven people at one meeting and six at the other. It was very good input that we received. We were disappointed with the turnout, but the people who did come and sent a couple to both meetings certainly gave some really, made some valid points and raised some, some good questions that needed to be asked and need to be followed up on, which will be our next step. I think in general, where the committee is at at this point would be that we're going, we think we should continue to focus and move ahead on the B1 zoning proposed changes, take the public input that we've had and really, and just focus on, you know, interim changes to B1 zoning. And to deal more also with some density issues in B1 so that we can firm up and have less flexibility in the language, a little more defined criteria. We would most likely recommend tabling, expansion of the B1 zone at this time to those other areas closer to, between the golf course and Hershey Lane. And then put forward more of the planning, if you will, for changes to the M4 zone and the gateway corridors with the overlay districts onto a, let me say, a bigger platform. So a bigger planning project and potentially in conjunction with impacts if Black Bear is moving forward. Particularly, you know, especially at that south end of the town where traffic seems to be just a huge concern and how is, how's the interplay of any development down on the south end of town, you know, really going to impact traffic flows through there and how can that be best planned? So I'll ask Janice to jump in on anything else.
One of the things that I think we've talked a little bit about is maybe having some kind of a visioning session and really try and engage the public in that. And maybe it could be done not only just for the M4 district, but could include the Black Bear TIF and to really get a sense from the community as to what direction we should be going in. And I know the town council has suggested that as a possibility. So I'm hoping maybe this spring, we might be able to bring onboard a facilitator who can help implement that process for us.
Good.
Let me ask you, yes, I'm just, in connection with the Black Bear, I just, I wasn't sure exactly how you were connecting the Black Bear TIF with the M1, with the gateway zone and the M1 zone.
Just connectivity relative to traffic and development all on the south end of town. Just, you know, we've got this mass of land on the south end of town and having any of the development schemes be really well-planned out, particularly relative to traffic impact.
Okay. I wasn't sure whether you were perhaps considering some kind of zoning that would incorporate them. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Val or Diane?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I look forward to watching.
And I do have copies, by the way. I'm sorry. I meant to pass these out in advance for you two planning board members. I don't know if all of you have had a chance to look at what the committee has come up with thus far, but...
Especially if anyone has any comments on the B1, any proposed changes for B1, if they can be just submitted to Diane would be great.
Okay.
Because we'll be, we'll be meeting, that will be, our next meeting is going to be focused on moving forward on B1.
All right. Next on the agenda is any new business? Any old business?
No.
Rick?
I'd like to thank John for his years of service. He's been a hard-working leader. He's led, we've done a lot of wonderful things in the past four to five years that he's been chairman and I think we all should say, offer him a vote of confidence and congratulations and good luck in your future.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other...
Will be missed.
We will miss Eric. He's been with us for...
Yes.
And Eric is leaving too.
Eric is leaving too.
Oh, gosh. I'm sorry.
He's going to be...
Oh, no.
Seems like...
Three on the planning board?
Yep.
Has it been three years?
Yep. Goes quick.
It does go quick.
Just remember, just because you come off of a board doesn't mean that you can't contribute on a committee.
You're right.
That's right.
Yes.
Any other old businesses or new business? Okay, Janice?
I'll let Eric do it just tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're out of here.